I will call our meeting to order. If everyone will please rise for the invocation, pledge of allegiance, and moment of silence. We have Mr. Chris Hughes from Springs of Life Camp for our invitation tonight.
Father, we love you. Thank you for, Lord, just thank you for the rain. Just thank you for this evening and just, Lord, just all the time that's been put in the preparations for this meeting specifically, Father, but all the other ones, Lord, just all the people that are represented all across our community, Father. We're just praising for the opportunity to be able to come together and talk about this with you, Lord. And I just pray for a cool, calm, and collective conversation tonight, Father, that is not just pleasing, Father, to you, but, Father, that is the best interest for our community. Love you, your name is great, amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And a moment of silence in recognition of U.S. military serving here and abroad in all public safety. Welcome to the Patrick County Board of Supervisors meetings where our local governing body convenes monthly or bi-monthly to address community matters that are under the purview of the Board. We uphold civility as a cornerstone of our proceedings and expect all attendees to conduct themselves accordingly. There is always opportunity for public engagement, including scheduled public comment and additional public hearings on specific agenda items. We encourage active participation from our residents. In addition to these meetings, your Board of Supervisor representative is readily available for communication by email and/or phone outside of the formal session. Please be advised that outburst or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. We aim to maintain a respectful and productive environment for all attendees. Thank you for your cooperation and involvement in shaping the future of our community. With that, we are ready to approve the agenda. Can I get a motion for that?
I have two amendments, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I need to pull Agenda Item Number Six, 2027 General Real Estate Reassessment, move it to the next meeting.
Okay.
And then for this meeting, add Circuit Court HVAC and Electrical System Upgrades.
You want that to take the place of Number Six? Just switch them out, or?
Yeah, that'll be fine.
Okay. So that would be HVAC upgrades?
I'll make the motion to approve the agendas presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a second. Any discussion? Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We have a presentation, the proclamation for EMS Week, May 18th through 24th. Mr. Castle, would you like to speak about that at all?
Yeah.
Okay. Give me just one second to pull it up and I'll speak about it.
Just thanking everybody that puts their stuff on.
Okay. May you go ahead and I will read that quickly. Okay, this is a proclamation by the Board of Supervisors, whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illnesses or injury, and whereas emergency medical services fill healthcare gaps by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas the emergency medical services team consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas the members of emergency medical services team, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their life-saving skills, and whereas it is appropriate to recognize the values and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Week, I'm sorry, the Emergency Medical Services Week now. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Patrick County Board of Supervisors proclaims the week of May 18th through the 24th, 2025, as Emergency Medical Services Week and the 51st anniversary of the EMS Week. Their theme is EMS Week, We Care for Everyone. I encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities in honor of EMS profession and the essential service it provides. So I want to say a personal thank you to all of the EMS providers out there in the county, both the paid and the volunteer. I've had some elderly grandparents and parents who've needed you all. Without you all, we would have changed a lot of stuff over the past few years. So I want to extend a personal thank you. Any other comments from the Board on that before we vote on it?
I'd like to echo that. I know it seems like every time with events that happen, just with every event, you just continue to amaze and go above and beyond. Wonderful work, especially lately with our Special Ops Ropes Team. Amazing job, fellas. You guys did a wonderful job pulling a young man out of the side of a cliff to safety. The major fire we had over on the backside of Stewart, it's a wonder they burned all of town down. So again, with every time, every station, every company just continues to go above and beyond, and thank you.
Any other comments? If not, can I get a motion for that proclamation?
I'll make the motion.
I have a motion. Can I get a second?
Second.
And a second. Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you all again. Okay. Next, we move on to the regular session, approval of meeting minutes from April 14th and April 28th. I think you've all had a chance to look through those, so whenever you're ready, a motion to approve those.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Perry, is that for both? We need to probably do them individually. Minutes?
I'm good with both if the rest of the Board agrees.
You're good with both? Okay. So we're approving both of them at the same time. We had a motion and a second. We did. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Marshall?
Obey.
Okay. Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Thank you all for that. Approval of the bills, claims, and appropriations. Do we have any questions about any of those? Okay, if not, can I get a motion to approve the bills, claims, and appropriations?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. If not, Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Mr. Perry?
Aye.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. We're now going to move on to the public comment period. Public comment guidelines. The public comment offers citizens the opportunity to address the Board either in person or in writing on matters relevant to the responsibilities of the Board to maintain a respectful and constructive environment. Please adhere to the following guidelines addressing the Board. Please direct all comments to the Board as a whole, refusing from addressing individual Board members or employees of the Board or county. Respectful conduct, personal attacks, as well as the use of insulting, profane, or vulgar language will not be tolerated. Scope of the topics. Comments should pertain to issues within the purview of the Board and local government. Topics beyond the Board's control or unrelated to local governance are not appropriate for public comment. Question and answer. Public comment is not a question and answer session. Board members will not respond to questions during public comment without permission from the Chair. Enforcement. The Chair may rule the Speaker out of order for violating these rules. Upon a second violation, the Speaker may be removed from the podium. Number Six, eligibility. Only residents of Patrick County or property owners of Patrick County are eligible to address the Board during a public comment period. Number Seven, time limit. Each Speaker will be allocated five minutes for their comments. The Board will signal five minutes has passed. The Speaker has an additional minute to complete their comments. However, if multiple citizens wish to address the Board on the same issue, they may appoint a spokesperson to speak up to 10 minutes, provided they forfeit their individual speaking slots. Chair authority. The Chair has the authority to manage time allocated for public comment, including limiting the number of speakers, shortening speaking times, or waiving any public comment provisions as deemed necessary. Sign-up procedure or sign-up sheet will be available on the pony for citizens to reach her to speak. Speakers will be called in the order of sign-up, and additional speakers may be accommodated if time permits. Submission of comments. Speakers may provide copies of their comments for the clerk for inclusion in the meeting minutes. Thank you for your cooperation in maintaining a respectful and productive public comment Up first, we have Kurt Bozenmeyer from Smith River District.
Good evening. My name is Kurt Bozenmeyer. I'm from the Smith River District, and I would like to address the Board regarding the proposed capital improvements project budget. Specifically, I'm concerned about the $400,000 for a new ambulance that is still listed in the budget as of 28 April 2025 for the public hearing at the last meeting. More specifically, I am curious about why we have spent so much time talking about the cost of this ambulance and so little time talking about why we need this new ambulance. Is this vehicle being purchased to replace an ambulance currently in service, or is it an additional ambulance for the purpose of expanding our EMS fleet? I will cut right to my immediate concern about ambulance purchases. I will be the first person to support purchasing whatever vehicles we need to provide better service to our residents. However, I am less than pleased to consider what might happen to any vehicle that might be replaced. Anyone who has walked the Mayo River Rail Trail recently cannot help but notice that there are two dead ambulances being stored near the maintenance building, right next to the dead Coca-Cola truck that has been stored there for many years. One of the dead ambulances is so old that the graphics identify it as an R.J. Reynolds Hospital ambulance. How long has that been there? And the newer ambulance seems to have a fair amount of serviceable equipment mounted on it, such as a full set of emergency lights and a front bumper-mounted winch. Couldn't some of this equipment be utilized elsewhere if the ambulance is truly dead? The Mayo River Rail Trail is poised to undergo some significant upgrades due to receiving some grants and has the potential to be a significant tourism draw for the county. As such, I fear that the presence of a vehicle junkyard next to the trail will not be an asset to tourism. In the worst case, I fear that the county may start storing derelict vehicles in more conspicuous locations. Please consider requiring an exit plan for these vehicles before adding more to the fleet. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, we have Jane Folk from Dan River.
Good afternoon. Thank you for your resolution. I appreciate it, although your budget doesn't, seems to be contrary to your resolution. When BLs and ALS are only going to get a 3% raise while others are getting 19%, and some people who got $5,000 raises last year are getting $5,000 again this year. Each of you is responsible for the raises that you're giving these people. This is our money, but you're spending it. Almost a million dollars last year in raises, which probably the people needed them. This year, we're doing a half a million to the same people that got them last year. I'm sure you're each and every one aware of what I've just told you. These raises do not seem to be anywhere near fair or equitable to the employees. Again, this is your responsibility to the Patrick County employees and to its citizens, as this is our money and their money you're spending. On another route, I still say we do not need new taxes for Patrick County, but better spending of the resources we have, as I will reiterate, we're carrying over $15 million, and that went up a million in two months. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Steve Ferring from Dan River District.
Thank you. I've addressed the Board regarding the county operating budget in previous meetings, but have not seen your proposed personnel budget for the 25, 26-year. I would like to have assumed that you used the Virginia Compensation Board cost of living increases as a guide for increases in the salaries payable by the county in conjunction with input from the county administrator. It would appear that you're not doing so based on what I was given regarding the proposed salaries for 2006, 26. The chart I was provided shows employee increases for 2026, but then shows a reduction of part or all of that increase for 33 of our county employees, including five of the constitutional office holders. If you're reducing constitutional salaries, then who shall we classify as being stolen from? The State Compensation Board that provides all the compensation, or the employee who does not get to pay? Who shall we blame when this defalcation comes to light? Will those of you in agreement with this take responsibility for doing what is an illegal act? What the hell is some of you thinking? The way you're trying to handle this issue is not an incentive to continue to work for the county. This may be your goal, but this is more of the mismanagements burdened the county in the past. The administrator should be in charge of determining what the cost of living increase should be and any supplemental individual pay increases that are deserved by individual employee. That request is a budgetary consideration that needs Board approval as part of the entire budget. The personnel budget is public information and should be discussed as an integral part of the operating budget of the county, not talked about among yourselves and finalized in meetings close to the public. The detailed personnel budget does not fall under the Board's policy prerogative. The management of personnel is an operating issue. Thank you.
Thank you. And up next, we have Galen Gilbert from Peters Creek District.
Good afternoon to all of y'all up there. The biggest thing I see right now is they've got this tax set at 16 cent for personal properties. Like some of y'all said before, that's got to come way down. And if you're going to put it on the backs of the fire and rescue people, I think that money needs to be put in a special account that cannot be touched by anybody until it becomes a necessity to use that for fire and rescue, because it seems like a habit. If they get a little bit of money around here, they like to spend it, and that needs to stop. And on the raises for the employees, they shouldn't get no more than the senior citizens' guide of a 2.4%, if not less than that. They've had some pretty big raises over the last two or three years and some pretty big bonuses that they were given, and I don't see nobody giving the senior citizens in this county a bonus of anything, so think about this budget very highly bad. It's really bad. And I think there's some more cuts that can be made to help the budget out and help the people in this county. So only other thing I've got to say is the hospital's going to be doing a public meeting, I believe it's May 21st, around 6:30. I think it's over here at the community banner building, and if anybody wants information, that'd be a good time to come and see them, because I've been over to the hospital many a times, and they are doing a lot of work in that place. They've really put some money into it, so just can't wait till they get open and hope the people in this county will use it and trust these fellows, because they're being pretty much upfront and letting everybody know what's going on. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you. With that, I will close the public comment period. Next thing we have is under New Business, a Facilities Update.
Good evening, gentlemen. I just wanted to take a moment of your time. I talked to Ms. Beth, and I thought it would be a good idea to give you a snapshot of the facilities, which I have the blessing to be able to supervise. And I think you'll find this information informative and something that you can take back to your constituents and you can get an idea. On April 1st, we started using a system to keep track of all of our work and everything that the maintenance department does. We use a work order, a trouble ticket. It was a brand-new program, so some of the things that we did were not involved in that. Since the first month, we started implementing the programs. We did things that the department did to make it into the system. So our fine maintenance department was assigned and completed a total of 90 work orders for the month of April. These work orders had a total value of $6,525.38. A total of 323.19 man-hours were used to complete these endeavors. The tickets range from preventative maintenance. We started preventative maintenance program for the county for anything that we have, in HVAC, electric, anything that can use preventative maintenance. We did things like installing wires and office work and plumbing and HVAC work. So if you're ever interested, we do have the report itself. It's quite lengthy. It would show you how many people, how many hours were consumed to fix that task, if you will. And then our wonderful animal shelter, a lot of people don't know that, with Wanda and Vicki, there's only two employees, and we run that shelter 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So these two ladies are putting the boots on every day, right? So this month, they took in 34 dogs. Three were reclaimed by their owners, and five were adopted, and then, excuse me, five were adopted and three went to local animal rescues. They also had an intake of 15 cats, which three were adopted, four of them went to a local rescue. And then I'll finish with the transfer station, some staggering numbers. And again, we've been running pretty short in the transfer station. Ms. Donna finally hired our last temporary employee, excuse me, part-time employee. So they've been running short. So the transfer station for the month of April, they sent out two 53-foot trailers filled with paper, plastic, aluminum, and cardboard to the recycling center. We also sent out two 53-foot trailers, which averaged nine tons of tires for recycling. The transfer station sent a total of 919.72 tons out of the facility for the month of April. Of that 919.72 tons, 686.24 tons was weighed in, and 233.48 tons was household trash that's deposited by our citizens in our county that come in and drop it off in their trunk or in their pickup truck. The breakdown was as follows. General cleanup, we took in 75.46 tons. Commercial, we took in 514.38 tons, excuse me. Construction, 29.08 tons. Furniture, 4.24 tons. Household trash, 40.96 tons, and split tires of 1485 tons. If you added them up, you're going to be off about seven tons if someone's doing their math. That's because things carried in from March to April, and also appliances. We don't recycle appliances. We take those to the recycling center in Stewart at Jamie's. The above numbers do not encompass those appliances, but what's astonishing about these numbers, that the citizens of our county dispose of 8.98 tons a day of trash. That's pretty staggering, right? Do I have any questions? Thank y'all. Have a good evening.
Yes, up next, we do have the HVAC upgrades or update. I'm not sure which one.
Melissa, sir?
The HVAC.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So at the end of September, I met with Honorable Judge Brinkes. He requested his air conditioning HVAC system be upgraded or replaced. The complaint that the current system does not keep the courtroom cooled at all, and they even did jury selection probably three weeks ago, and they had to dismiss a juror because they said it was too hot. So we knew the complaint was valid. We also know that our maintenance department has ad Freon into the system. The system is from 1989. It's a 20-ton, single-unit system on the roof, right? So what I did was in October, we invited, and I make sure I give you the right numbers, I want to say six contractors to come into the building to give us a bid, excuse me, five. So we brought five contractors, and a lot of questions were asked, and at the time, most of the questions were due to electrical problems in the courthouse and how to get 400 amp service up to that room. So we contracted an electrical and engineering company, and they came in, drew up the electrical and the engineering drawings for prospective bidders to bid. The reason why we did the, separated them from electric tool and separated them from one contractor HVAC doing the whole system is because every contractor said that they would simply turn around and sub it out, and if they subbed it out, obviously, they're going to mark up 20% on what electrical engineers, or, excuse me, electrical contractors are going to do. So we went out for bid for the electric. We asked two companies to bid it. One wrote back and said it was a little too big, and one company did provide the electrical contract bid for $51,000 even. And then we did get back two bids for the HVAC system, and one came in at $103,470, and the other came in at $98,057. So basically, that's it. I just wanted to present it. I told the judge, you know, my job is to present it to you. It's your building and your systems, and to have any questions or concerns or anything about. I will say, let me step back. The electrical system currently has a 220 that runs up to the roof. There's not a switch. There's not a circuit. There's nothing on that line. It's a hotline through the courthouse, which is extremely non-coding, extremely illegal. Jason Brown, the county inspector, did a great, great, great job and helped me a lot to go over there and look at that, spent a lot of time to follow that line all the way through the courthouse. Spent a lot of time to follow that line all the way through the courthouse. And it is a hotline, so if that courthouse caught on fire, there's no shutting off that electric. So that's why we have to upgrade the system. To upgrade the electric, we're going to run 400 amps to the roof. The system that we will be putting in, two seven-and-a-half-ton units and a five-ton unit, require about 320 amps of service. But if we ran 300 to the roof and we ever had to upgrade something, I'd be back in front of you asking for more money and I wouldn't expect the job. So we're going to go with 400 amps. That's what the electrical engineer suggested. Any questions, sir, gentlemen?
Is there any chance that we can get some additional quotes?
We went out for bid, sir. So we did. And I can tell you, we had five companies for the HVAC system, only two bid it. And same with the electric. The electric company, the second company, I called them and asked them why they didn't submit a bid and they just said it was too hard. I'll take your direction, you know, however you want me to do it. But we did get five bids for the HVAC system. I don't know, am I allowed to say publicly who they are?
You had five come to the meeting.
Correct, five bidders, excuse me. So we had, can I tell them the names? They were local, they were Vipperman, McKinney Heating and Air, Hydroair Systems, Covenant Enterprises, and Pilot Mechanical, Inc. And they had a lot of time to bid the job because like I told them when they went through the walkthrough, they asked a lot of questions I didn't have the answer for. And I wasn't going to have something bid that, you know, we'd have to come back and bite us. And so that's why the court went out and got the electrical engineer as well as the mechanical engineer to draw it up for them. So there's no doubt in anybody's mind what needs to be done.
Did we get any other feedback from the potential bidders other than it's too hard?
No, sir. The only feedback we have is the two for the, and it really isn't feedback, sir. The two things is we just had two different prices in the bid. And I think what we were waiting on for the bid that was the lowest because we do not know that company, we're familiar with Vipperman because they do the maintenance contract for all the HVAC systems in the county. I'm not saying anything about Covenant Enterprise, but we didn't know a lot. So Ms. Ruth went to Covenant Enterprise and asked them for three references for commercial jobs that are commensurate to what they would be performing in the courthouse. It's a 20-ton system. You can see the, it's on the roof, it's above the clerk of courts office. It's from 1989. The air handler is pretty well shot up top in the attic as well. One of the things is we asked them to remove, part of the bid was to remove the 20-ton air handler that's in the attic of the facility because it's just a paperweight. And so there's a few hours there for a company to come in and disassemble. But to answer your question, Ms. Ruth and the county put it out together as a team and those are the only people that we got, sir, to respond.
What was the name of the company that you got the electrical quote?
Electrical, sir, was Cost LLC and Triangle Electric Corporation. Triangle was the only one, sir, that put out and gave us a quote back for $51,000. I asked Cost why, just to see why they didn't bid the job. And his comment was, it was pretty technical and they were relying on a gentleman to help them and they didn't. That gentleman says he didn't want the job. So it was sort of, I don't mean that to be rude, but it was good that he didn't bid something and then we'd be chasing around and, you know, so at least he was upfront and forthright.
What about Triangle's really good, too?
Yes, sir.
Light Electric in Henry County, did you check that?
Who was it, sir?
Light Electric?
No, sir, I can write that in.
They're out of basket there. They're a pretty good job company.
We, I can ask Ms. Ruth. I don't have the list that she publishes. She has, she puts it out through the state and then she has a list of interested vendors. So I can get back to you, Mr. Kendrick, and let you know all the vendors that were offered to attend the walkthrough. But the walkthrough was mandatory because the scope of the job and a 220 coming into the courthouse right now in 20-year buildings, that's not real conducive to our employees, our court, our town, or anybody, right?
But what about two on the library? McKinney, did they come back with a bid on?
McKinney did write us back. He did not bid, he was not interested in the job, sir. I do have an email from him. He declined, he was very busy.
I just wonder, he's the one that put it on the library, as far as I know.
Yeah, he is, sir. He came to the walkthrough, but he wrote a nice letter again and on the email, proper format. And he said to me, hey, we're just too busy. And he has a lot of people instead of commercial jobs that he was more interested in doing, sir.
Could you still get one with Light if they are interested?
I would think that since we went out to bid, we'd have to check probably with the attorney. And I would think that we would, because this is just my opinion. I think since we already put it out for bid, I don't think we'd be able to do that because we already published the bid prices and the other companies would say that, you know, you know, like I just told you, say for an example, Triangle bid 51, it wouldn't be fair. I would assume, sir, I can get you the legal answer on that. But if you're putting out proprietary information, I own a business and if someone published my bid and then they went back out for another bid, I, you know, I would be disappointed in that entity. But I can get you the book answer and I'm sure I'll check with the attorneys and they'll be able to help me, sir.
Well, you know, like in the future, maybe it'd be a good idea to ask us about some of this stuff.
Ask what, sir?
If there are specific businesses y'all want us to add to our list, we're happy to put them on the list. But I know Ruth does have a pretty comprehensive list of contractors for HVAC, electrical, plumbing. You know, whenever we do something like this, you know, she gets it out as much as she can. So if there are specific businesses y'all like us to add to the list, please. And it's on the public website as well. So anybody who's signed up for Eva, even if you're in Northern Virginia or Southwestern Virginia or Hampton Roads can see this. It's all public information is out there. If there is specific contractors y'all'd like us to add, to send to, please let us know and we'll get them on the list for any future bids.
Okay. I'm just saying, when you get ready to do something like that, that big, it wouldn't be a bad idea to run it by us ahead of time.
Run it by, did you say you, sir?
By us.
By you, okay, I will. Right. We, like Ms. Beth said, I'm not making excuses. We have a list and we published it through the state. I didn't know there was other, our other businesses. And so I'll let y'all know and the next time I'll make sure we go through you all. Maybe you'll have some more insight. Thank you. Yes, sir. Any other questions, gentlemen?
I just want to clarify, this is a need from the judge, not just a want, correct?
Oh, yes, sir. And honestly, if you reached out to him, Mr. Witt, like three weeks ago, I went over there in lieu of this, I've been over there every week or so to check and make sure, you know, we have a solid plan. And he actually had to dismiss, I believe he said, a potential juror because the heat and the, that was that week it got hot. The system is from 1989. I was on the roof, I did see it. I went up into the attic, I looked at the duck work. I got Jason Brown, who's just a wealth of knowledge. He as well checked everything to make sure this just wasn't. And I will say off the record, I know it doesn't matter, but Judge Brinkes seems to me like he always has our county in his heart, in his best interest. I don't think he just wants it, you know, five degrees cooler so he can put on a sweater. I think it's a legitimate concern. The heat, we have the boiler, so we can back up the heat. But the bid calls for two 17,500 heat strips, KW heat strips in case. But he does have backup heat for the boiler. And I was able to verify that and I made sure I turned it on, so. But yeah, and the vent system and the main vein through the vent system's in bad shape as well. There's very little insulation in the attic. I mean, it sort of adds up. And the other thing is, is, you know, anything that's 20, what is that, be 36-years-old? 36-year-old system, the efficiency of that, a 20-ton? We'd be able to destroy it with the 20 tons that we're putting in.
I'm sure it needs to be replaced.
Yes, sir.
It's been a topic of discussion for quite a while. I just wish that we had more bidders to work with.
I agree.
I don't like saying that we've got competitive bids when we've got two bids for one part of it and one bid for the rest of it.
Right. Well, if you have some insight, Mr. Overby, like Mr. Kendrick said, if you know people, you know, that's something that you want to incorporate from here on out. But I can tell you honestly, we have a list. We also went out through the state website as well to make sure. It is out there. It's not like I picked one or two or, you know, honestly, we didn't pick three because we knew them. I don't know any of these companies except for Vipperman. And he does a well job, great job for, you know, our maintenance. But I don't know Triangle or other electricians. But we did ask everybody that we knew and we did publish it as required by law to make sure it's done properly.
No grants available for any of that?
I'm sorry, I'd have to ask Ms. Moore. No. All right, thank y'all. And I'll, did you want me to send you what I spoke to, Mr. Kendrick?
No, no.
No.
But I would like to see Light Electric put on because they are a big outfit in Henry County. Light Electric.
Light, L-I-G-H-T, sir? I do not know. I can get you a list, Mr. Kendrick, tomorrow to see who it was sent to specifically. Ms. Ruth does a great job on the team. She always has a real comprehensive list. Actually, two of the people that bid the HVAC system had asked her to be on the list. We didn't know them. So we can add them, sir. All right, y'all have a good evening.
So we got references for Covenant.
I don't think we've gotten a response back yet.
No, sir. We put, we took the bids Thursday, so I can brief to you today. And our goal was to give you, you know, a fail-proof package. But I just wasn't comfortable with Covenant. Like Ms. Beth said, Ms. Ruth asked them to send us three commercial references. We knew Vipperman's references because he does work for the county. And we know he's solid. I'm not saying Covenant isn't. But I'd hate to award or ask you to an award a bid if we didn't do our due diligence to make sure that we had someone that was capable.
And what was Covenant's bid?
Sir, Covenant bid $98,057. And Vipperman was at $103,470. The difference is $5,400. Covenant was cheaper.
Covenant's based out of?
They were based out of Meadows of the Dancer. And I can, when I get the references back, I'll pass them to Ms. Beth so she can forward them appropriately.
Okay.
All right, y'all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Are there any performance bonds connected to these jobs?
Sir?
Sorry. Are there any performance bonds connected to these jobs? In other words, we don't have references from the person? Is there anything to back it up if they don't complete the job?
We could. We did not put that in the package. And I'm not aware of us doing that in previous jobs since I've been here. But we could put in a performance bid or we can award a job to say Covenant if his references check out and ask him to put a performance bond on that, sir.
I've never spent this amount of money on any board without having a performance bond attached to it.
My experience has been the opposite.
Is it really?
Yeah. When it's this, when you're talking about barely six figures, the cost of the performance bond drives the price up so much.
Okay, yeah.
That's where you end up with a problem. And if we didn't put it in our invitation for bid or our request proposal, we probably can't do it now.
No, I understand that. I'm curious if we even do that at all, that's.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So as far as, as far as any action on that, it sounds like, and I'm just saying, it sounds like most people on the board are wanting to wait till we get those references for Covenant. Set the bill of the board and do this.
I was saying, tonight was just informational. There's no action for us to take tonight.
So if you can do that, hopefully, we can get that settled here in the next month or so. Okay. Up next, we have the Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Good afternoon, board. I'm just here tonight on behalf of the Economic Development Authority to present our strategic plan. There's no board action required here tonight. But I just wanted to let you all know that we've worked diligently on this and economic development. I do appreciate them as much work as they put into it. Want to thank Ms. Sims also for her guidance and helping me get a better understanding, too, as we move forward in our strategic plan here with the county. Couple of points of reference that I do want to bring up though, and I just want to read the mission statement and then make a couple of quick points to you as well. The mission statement here of our strategic plan is to support business development and sustainable economic growth in order to improve the quality of life of citizens through strategic public investment access to higher-paying jobs and access quality work opportunities. We will strive to create an inclusive environment where businesses thrive and our county prospers in harmony with social and environmental values. So we really took a look at this and wanted to make sure that we, first and foremost, are inclusive in everything that we do. I know the catchphrase now is transparency with a lot of people, but we do want to be upfront in the projects that we start going forward. You may have already know that there's a couple of projects that had been in the works and we're still working to get some of those through. And in my hindsight, I kind of wish there may have been a little bit more oversight on some of those going forward, but it is what it is. And then going forward also, our strategic plan is to provide a roadmap for the generations of economic development work in Patrick County. It establishes a residence-centric, transparent framework for economic development while sustaining a commitment to business engagement, private sector job creation, and complements other regional planning and economic development efforts. The strategic plan leverages the full resources of the Economic Development Department and supports the broader mission of Patrick County government. So again, just wanted to let you all know, if you haven't had a chance to take a look at it, please do. One of the things that we will be coming back before the board in the future, again, is for us to have another joint session with the board of supervisors, economic development. We'd like to include the Planning Commission as well as Soil and Water in that conversation as well. We are taking a look at a lot of the areas in the county where we can grow. We've been doing a lot of calls and reaching out to several individuals. Again, you know, nothing's sustainable or solid at the moment. But again, we have to fish, we have to put out and we have to make ourselves available to grow. Also, we're glad to night have Mr. Ron Haley, Chairman of the Economic Development Authority, with us. And one of the things that we again want to point out is closer collaboration on the objective of the strategic plan, closer collaboration among the County Planning Commission, Tourism Committee, Public Service Authority, and other governmental agencies as required. So we just wanted to present this plan to you tonight, take an opportunity to take the chance to look at that. And then as we go further and we start having our joint sessions again, if we need to critique or change some things, they'll be more in line with the board of supervisors, then we will definitely happily entertain that as well. And then finally, tonight as well, I just wanted to present to you all a guidebook for elected and appointed officials. This is from the VITA, which is the Virginia Economic Developments Association. I am a member of the Virginia of VITA. And they produced this, again, just to give us some guidelines and some understanding how economic development work, exactly what economic development is, and the ways that we can collaborate and communicate together again to grow Patrick County. So take a look at that. We'll also be presenting a packet to our Economic Development Authority as well, too. Unlike Scotty, this week is Economic Development Week. We don't have a proclamation that I bring before you, but we are celebrating it. Hooray, hooray, hooray. So you don't have to make a proclamation. But again, thank you for all that you all do. And again, thankful for the guidance and again, from Mrs. Sims for definitely assisting me in this new role that I have. Any questions or comments?
I'd say well done. It's a wonderful foundation that's been needed for a long time to, like you said, help pave that way forward and looking forward to this development over the next years.
Appreciate it. And again, that was, Mr. Haley was one of the driving force of that because what I needed was guidance, exactly what we needed to accomplish. So we got it done. Now we're going to get it implemented, get it going. And hopefully, maybe in a little bit, we can come back with some good news. All right? Thank you, board.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Up next, under old business, the transient occupancy tax rate. What discussion do we have on that, Mr. Board?
I'd like to start with, currently, we're at 5%. A rough look online is what things are renting for, specifically around the Warhine and Ferrystone area. Looks like the average is around $150 a night. So at 5% on a $200 a night rental, that's roughly 10 cents a night or, say, 70 cents for a seven-day week.
$10.
For, for $200?
$200 a night. Yeah, yeah, thank you. It's been a long day, I've been up since 4:00. So at any rate, if we go up to 7%, that would bump it up to?
$14.
$14, thank you. And I know as each year as we get visitors into the county, I know that they... And I know as each year as we get visitors into the county, I know that they depend on a strong, reliable EMS service, like we found out two weeks ago, the visitor that was hiking and failed. A lot of resources went after that. We always have someone lost, stranded, hurt, or hiking along the Rock Castle Gorge. So that needs to strengthen, or that money's coming somewhere to support the visitors into the county. As visitors come into the county, our parks, and I specifically have Frey Clifton Park and the Lover's Leap, and as visitors come to our county and just take it upon themselves to write their name and graffiti all over, you know, it takes a lot of money to clean that up, especially now with the reworking of 58. We're going to get a new face lift up there and a lot of potential to do great, wonderful things for our visitors into the county. And again, when people take it upon themselves for their graffiti, it takes money to clean up. I know the ICDR Park in Woolvine, as more bikers come in to ride those trails, the committee, Ms. Belcher and the ICDR Park Committee doing an amazing job keeping those restrooms clean, keeping the basic park clean with trash. Our county does an amazing job keeping all the fields mowed, and that also takes money. The ball fields at Patrick Springs and Dan River and Air Rad, I know they're constantly having some kind of ball tournament. And again, clean facilities, bathrooms, that kind of thing for visitors coming in. And that's why part of that is allowed to go into the general fund to help support those things that support our visitors. And with that, I would like to make a motion to increase the transient occupancy tax from 5% to 7%.
We have a motion to increase the TOT from 5% to 7%. Is there a second? No second? Okay. Any more discussion on the transient occupancy tax rate? If not, personal property tax rate. Any discussion on that?
I think that's something that the board needs to look at as a whole. So instead of just raising a tax, I think especially with all the adjustments that are going to be made to real estate, I think that's something that the board needs to sit down and look at collectively to have a healthy balance between real estate, personal property. I do feel personal property is the, there's no such thing as a fair tax, so don't get me wrong, but I think it's the more fair tax. But I also think that there needs to be a healthy balance. Currently, we're unbalanced. We've got real estate, which is on the higher end. We've got personal property that's on the lower end. And as our real estate goes to change with all the changes that are coming down, I think that we don't need to do anything with personal property at this time. But I do feel that we need to start having discussions on what that collaborative, healthy balance, a strategic tax plan to go into that, along with, I know we were discussing machine and tool tax, and I personally feel that should stay low. But I understand the concerns that were raised about keeping them the same. And that's another conversation I think the board can have as part of a strategic plan moving forward, even if it's having a business license. So that way, the small businesses with a county business license, any taxable things that they have in that business, they could use the lower machine and tool tax versus the personal property tax. But all that comes with a strategy that I feel that we need to, once this budget is settled, I think we need to look at a good strategy and building that healthy balance between the two. So right now, I don't, I don't think we should change anything with personal property tax at this time.
Any more discussion on the personal property tax rate?
I agree with what Mr. Perry says. We do not presently anticipate enough revenue to cover our budget needs. And that revenue is going to come from somewhere eventually. My concern is that it's going to hurt a lot of people if it comes 100% out of the reassessment at a property tax. I think they're going to go up 40% or more, just because of property value increases over the last five years. So yeah, I think we need to actively talk about that over the next year. So we're ready for this and have some decisions by the, when the time comes.
Okay. Any more discussion on the personal property tax rate? No motions related to personal property. Okay, continuing forward onto the financial year 2025-26 budget. Discussion on that?
Mr. Wood, I do have, after last month's public hearing, had a couple of requests from the board, from various board members, and clarification on a couple of things. Aren't really specific to the proposed fiscal year 26 budget, but kind of are connected just in conversations that have been had. So if you have three things to address, if that's okay?
Okay, go ahead.
Take-home vehicles. Patrick County employees do not have take-home vehicles. Staff report to work in their personal vehicles and utilize county-owned vehicles for official duties, such as maintenance calls, building inspections, and related services. County debt. An updated debt overview was provided to the Board of Supervisors earlier today. As of July 1st, 2025, Patrick County's total outstanding debt stands at $26.7 million. Approximately 71% of that total is attributed to school construction and facility improvements. Much of the debt originating from capital projects between 2005 and 2010. All applications are being repaid on schedule with the final maturity set for fiscal year 2040. Unassigned fund balance. Contrary to public claims of overspending, Patrick County has made deliberate, strategic efforts to improve its financial position. One clear indicator of this is the growth in our unassigned fund balance. In fiscal year 2020, our unassigned fund balance was $6.4 million, representing 13.95% of operating expenditures. At the close of the most recent fiscal year, that figure had grown to $15.5 million, or 22.74% of operating expenditures, an increase of more than $9.1 million. I encourage board members and residents to seek accurate and complete information by contacting our office directly. Thank you.
Thank you. I think that answers some questions that we've had, both as a board and questions that have been brought up during public input as well. So back to, continuing on with the fiscal year budget. Discussion on that from anyone up on the board?
Are we still looking at needing $197,336?
Yes.
Since, since we don't have any other means of revenue coming in, I think that we should look at it taken from the reserves, so, or the excess of the reserves. Taxpayers paid into it, and if it's above that best practice number, then I think that would be a suitable use for that.
Mr. Perry, I will agree with you on that. This is money that the county has paid in. Your tax dollars have gone to this. And, you know, we've gone from, what, 2.6 down to less than 200 overage. I know we've, with the help that we have, as well as the staff, trimmed that down dramatically. I know I've attended some departmental and board meetings over the last month or so, and having to cut, you know, departmentally anymore, I know Sheriff's Department, Parks and Rec, every department took a hard hit. And I really can't, in good conscience, go back and say, well, Sheriff, I need you to trim another 1% off your budget somehow, or 2% or whatever we'd have to do. And, you know, doing the same thing to Parks and Rec and all of them, I'm just listing those two, would be a really hard pill for me to swallow right now. So I'm in agreement with Supervisor Perry over there as well. What other comments do we have on the budget for next year?
So how much are we using for capital improvement out of the unassigned fund balance?
I have to pull up. The CRP budget stands right now at 1.328,484.
Could you repeat that one more time? I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's still counting $190,000 for access control for the administration building?
Yes. And of course, if and when a budget is improved for those, all those items that, you know, go over the procurement amount will be put out for bids. So, you know, hopefully we'll get in bids that maybe are less than that, but we don't have any specifics yet.
One little item I noticed a while back when he was talking about paying Davenport to do a financial study or financial advisory, did we cut that out?
It was for $15,000. Y'all requested extra information about it, and we sent it out to the board. I don't think there's any action taken on it.
It was put back in at one point.
Yeah.
Is it taken out now?
If y'all like to vote.
Is it in or out right now?
It's in.
It's in.
I think we ought to take that out. I think we ought to stop some of these outside studies this year.
If y'all like to vote on that, we'll take it out.
I'll make a motion that we take the Davenport study out.
Well, sir, it's not a study. It's, they're a financial advisor that, of course, Patrick County and other local governments use regularly. So they were going to do some financial policy work for us this upcoming year.
Well, how are we worded?
What?
How are we worded? I need to know, but I don't, I'm not for doing it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Any discussion on that? I'm going to have to look. Do we need motions on this, or can we just have consensus of the board?
I think it would be, I would feel more comfortable if I have to be able to tell us to take it out.
I think that's, I think they're needed. I think that having this, these best practices to help, so that do we do make the best decisions, which, where savings comes in, I think that they are, I think it is a needed service.
From the proposal that they submitted, I don't see that this is anything that our home people couldn't do through research with other localities. I mean, we're, it seems like we're trying to recreate the wheel and come up with a brand-new policy when it really shouldn't be that hard to...
You should get in your microphone so we can hear you back here.
I said, I do not feel that we need to go to an outside source to develop policies that are pretty much standardized across the state when we have our own employees that should be able to do this.
Okay. Any more discussion on that?
I disagree with the idea. None of us up here are qualified to replace these professionals. That's why we have them. And, not an insult, but I think a lot of time, members of any boards or supervisors or councils tend to lose sight of what their role is. And I believe the role is to hire competent professionals to handle situations like this. And I don't believe this is the role of our regular, you know, everyday staff.
I would be more concerned with the, our staff not having that legal expertise to cross those Ts, dot those Is. So should it be contested?
And not hiring full-time staff to do this, that are actual, you know, auditors or accountants. And having a consultant like this saves the county a whole lot of money. It's not a net loss, it's a debt gain.
I was putting my trust in the, in the staff we already have, that can come up with a budget and all these other things. And I feel confident enough that they can do it.
Sorry.
Want to borrow one of mine? I can't get much closer to this microphone. I say, what I was doing was putting faith in the staff we already have to do this research and stuff, instead of going outside to an outside company and saving the county a pile of money. And I trust them. They did most of the budget.
And I also think that their plate is full enough than to have to go back and dig through all the legal stuff to come up with the sound, qualified documents. And you're right, they're, absolutely, may they do a wonderful job. But I think that's a little too much on their plate, especially when it comes to the legal aspect.
Well, that's the reason I said I'd like to cut some of this outside stuff out for the whole year. We spent quite a bit on outside companies. We've got to do the audit, but stuff like where they advised the Planning Commission cost a heck of a uproar and a mess and about $42,000. I forgot what this study here is supposed to cost. They've already given us a budget book that shows what shape we're in and pretty good figures that I just, I'm not on all these outside surveys. What are you making a face at, Jim?
Every county and city in the Commonwealth has financial advisors.
Well, we've got them. We've got them, but this is something else that was recently put out for a quote.
But, I'm sorry, Davenport is?
Davenport. What, $9,500 for some sort of financial analysis or something?
If you did a bond issue a couple of years ago, Mr. Kendrick, Davenport was essential in that.
Well, I'm not saying that, but I think this last little thing here, am I right that it was, it was a study like what we could take out of the reserve fund and stuff like that? Which we should keep it?
It's not a study. It's, it's writing policy. So a lot of the issues that have come up since I've been here have been based on, there is no policy that tells us what we should have in reserves. So, Mr. Kendrick, for example, you may have an opinion of how you want the reserves. Mr. Marshall may have a different opinion. If the board adopts a policy that says, we're going to maintain a 20% operating expenditure fund balance, then everybody's on the same page. And so when something comes up that say would dip us below that, we're all under the understanding of, hey, we've agreed that we can never go below that.
But do we really need an outside company to do that?
They're a financial advisor. They're not just some random company.
Well, I understand that. Why do we need somebody from the outside to tell us how to run our government?
Well, when he came, when he came in giving explanation of the audit on the budget, he told us about what percentage we needed to keep in that reserve. I can't remember the number.
A financial advisor, just like a personal financial advisor can help you, they can personalize those policies. They can personalize your plans. I'm just explaining what Davenport provides.
My comment is with Davenport is, I know it's $15,000, but I honestly think they probably earned every, every bit of what they're getting there as far as...
I mean, they're not telling us how to invest our money. That's, that's what I don't understand. I think...
That's part of their, that would be part of their advising.
And I think it would be...
I mean, our treasurer's been doing a great job managing our money, so I don't, I don't know that we need to change course of what we're doing.
But she doesn't have anything in writing that tells you what she's doing and what you want her to do.
Can nobody in this government write a policy?
I am not a financial policy advisor. I don't, I'm, I'm a CPA, yes, but I'm not a certified financial planning.
You don't have to be certified in anything to write a policy.
Mr. Overbeek, we are happy, we are happy to, like you said, I think you said, look at other governments, write a policy. It's very conflicting, to be quite honest, for y'all to ask us to do that, when every time I bring something to y'all that's a best practice, I get told we shouldn't look at other governments. And to be quite honest, a lot of the professional recommendations that staff has brought to this board have been completely, like, just, just, like, done away with. So it's confusing to think that y'all have confidence in us to write financial policy when other administrative tasks, we haven't been given the confidence to execute. But if the board's choice is to not move forward with using Davenport for this service, we will take a stab at it and we will bring it to you. The only thing I've asked is to please have a vote on this one budget item. Please.
So we had a motion and a second to remove Davenport, their $15,000 per year from the budget. Mr. Marshall?
Negative.
Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I vote no. So that fails, we will leave Davenport in there for this year at least. What else do we have for our budget for '25, '26?
If, I don't know if we're ready or not, but I would move to, to go ahead and use, uh, that, that reserve, that $197,336 from reserve and put it into the budget and move forward to adopting the fiscal year's budget.
Okay. Can you make that two separate motions, please?
It would just, that would be, um, you have the motion sheet that was provided, that, uh, Mr. Perry, one you're referencing is scenario seven.
I think we're getting too fast, because I still think that there's things that we can reduce in the budget.
I agree. And, and I was gonna ask too, and it's hard to keep up with everything goes on in the New York County, but has the school finalized theirs yet?
On the state level?
How much difference did we have to pay this year from last year? No change? Okay, so we still don't know exactly how we're setting it. Okay, but if I understand Amy right, Dave, Dave, we still don't know exactly what we're going to have to pay the school system, and I think we need to know that. And has the state budget passed theirs yet?
Well, I mean, and that, you know, a couple of years ago, there was two years in a row where the state budget wasn't even passed until after July. And Virginia, you know, we, we have to have these adopted and to get it in the system and everybody using it, um, kind of, Patrick County's kind of drop dead date is the end of May. Uh, we've been working on this since November. Uh, we're happy to, to make, if there's specific changes, um, we're happy to make them, um, but we haven't heard any specific feedback for, for a few weeks now.
Well, it'd be nice if we knew what the school system was gonna do. It might, might be that we saved enough right there to, to not take anything out of the reserves.
I think last year it changed 70 some thousand, so that would still be in there, still be deficit.
And some of the stuff that we've cut out, I noticed got put back in. And that's not a favorite thing, I know, but these water coolers and all, all that water stuff, all that, if I saw a note right the other day, was put back in.
Yeah, those were all discussed, once again, never had a, um, answer on. If y'all'd like to take a vote on those, we can do that.
I'd like to look back at the capital improvement projects, um.
Let me talk to that one second.
Sure.
Did you have a, a motion, was that a motion you made just a second ago?
I'll, I'll clean that up. I'll make a motion to adopt the fiscal year 2025 budget in a total amount of 76,203,341.
Okay, can I get a second for that?
I'll second.
Okay, now let's have all the discussion we want.
Okay, so back to the capital improvement project. So you listed 1.328484. Um, I'm assuming that was including the zero-turn mower that we've already purchased?
Oh, yes.
So we can take that out.
Okay, yes, sir.
Starting with access control system for the administration building of 190,000, I make a motion to reduce that to $50,000.
I'll second, because I think there's an alternative to that.
Is that a motion and a motion?
I just made a motion to reduce it to $50,000.
Right, because it's not a motion.
One on the floor is to approve the current, in the total amount of 76,203,341, and so we're having a discussion.
So we're having a discussion?
Discussion about that.
Well, let's go ahead and vote on it, so then we can make motions to make changes.
Any other discussion before we vote on it? Okay, so we have a motion to approve, uh, the current budget in the amount of 76,203,341. Uh, Mr. Marshall?
I wasn't gonna do this, but because I have reservations, uh, ranging from the wild, wild west of closed-session discussions that shouldn't be closed-session discussions on a budget.
Point of order, we're voting here, not talking about it.
Mr. Marshall, yes and no?
Well, I want to complete my statement without interruption. There's also big cuts made that I don't think are legitimate. I think they're gonna come back in some part of the year, um, requiring revisions, which, which is okay, but at the end of the day, even being as uncomfortable as I am with it, I think the, the greater good requires it. I vote yes.
Okay, Mr. Kendrick?
No.
Mr. Perry?
Uh.
Mr. Overby?
No.
And I vote no as well, so we can continue discussion on other things and we'll come back to the, later.
Okay, back to my motion on lowering the access control system budget to $50,000.
Okay, we have a, a motion to, uh, decrease the amount of access control to $50,000 as opposed to the 190, I'm sorry, 190-ish thousand. Um, is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay. Uh, any discussion on that?
I would like to see specifics and particulars. Uh, I would hate to go for 50 and then need 100, where if we got 190, we can always come down, but if we go 50, we can't go up, so.
We can always go up. I mean, no matter what we do, we can always go up. We can change it, just like we do with every single week that we have. We just about change the budget every single week.
Okay, any more discussion? Um, I'll agree with you, uh, Mr. Overby. Um, I think we could, we could trim a whole lot off of that. Um, I think we could start there and then we can always come back to it to add if needed as time goes on. That's just my opinion. Any other discussion on that? If not, Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Kendrick?
Uh.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Overby?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye on that as well. So we'll reduce that to 50,000. Okay, any more discussion on the budget now?
Do we have any clarification on the grant that was submitted for the generator for the administration building?
Uh, it's been submitted, we've not heard back yet.
Okay, I make a motion to remove the 486,045 dollars from the capital improvement budget.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Yeah.
Uh, we will not be compliant with the state emergency operation plan's requirements for an emergency operations center.
Did you look into the ones that we already have, or do you?
We don't. We don't have one. We, the, the, the plan that's currently adopted is inaccurate.
Well, we got two down there, because that's the one the other day.
They don't, um, yeah, we, we have generators, but we don't have a building with the telecommunications that is needed and the, the setup that is needed to run an emergency operations center. Um, if we have like a complete power outage like we did at the town of Stewart a couple months ago, uh, we currently do not have an emergency operations center. Thank God the power outage was less than 24 hours last time.
Could I ask a question? Somebody?
Go ahead.
Steve Allen, wasn't it? One time set up already could have that emergency center at Rotary?
Yes.
Yes.
Part of it was set up at Rotary for a shelter, some of it's set up at the, uh, first, uh, first management office, which I've heard they moved now. And, uh, sure, maybe I have something, and his building down there, I'm not sure. Our backup now, one center is, is, we're in partnership with Henry Franklin County currently, they're granting right now, uh, rewrite calls, things of that nature, but we don't have like a, um, it's not really the same thing as an EOC, it's just run dispatch of calls. Mr. Steve, you talking about a tool and, uh, call plan for that?
So we, we, we checked with our, Scotty, can you talk about this a little bit more? I'm sorry, I wasn't prepared to, to get into the technicalities of our issues with our EOC.
Right now, our EOC, we did have a backup system hotel building, which was generated, but where you since had to leave that building, or process leaving that building into the, uh, off the wall building, this is 104 rocker street. And until we get that generator to take moving, we will have to keep the building. Well, though, prior to my term here, the previous first medical director, had a breaker system put in this building here, uh, Mr. Mike Hudson did, built a grant. And there was supposed to have been a plug on the far end of the building down there where a portable generator was coming in. And the breaker box should be somewhere around D and B, or the next room back where the conference room, one of those, politics? Yes, that's, that's.
That's what I thought too.
Should have been a plug outside the building, and I'm not sure how big it was.
Okay.
Can I get your information after the meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we had a motion and a second to remove the 400,000 dollars for the backup generator, um, from the budget. Any more discussion on that? Okay, Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Kendrick?
Uh-huh.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Overby?
Uh.
I vote no until I get more information on what we have here. I don't think we're gonna make it to an approved budget tonight, so.
Sorry, so, um, I can't remember which one was it, so?
We're not taking it out yet.
Not taking it out, okay.
Yet.
I make a motion to remove the $50,000 for the courthouse carpet until other courthouse repairs are completed. For instance, it'd make a whole lot more sense to paint the interior than it would be to put the carpet down at this time and wait until other improvements are made before we worry about replacing the carpet.
So would you like to add one for painting, or just take it all out?
Has anybody tried to get any quotes for painting or anything?
I apologize, I did not know that was something we needed to act on.
I say we just remove it at this time.
Okay, so we have a motion to remove the 50,000, uh, for the courthouse carpeting. Is there a second on that?
I'll se, I'll second it for the time being.
Okay, we have a second. Mr. Overby, did you want me to include those stipulations until after painting, or just, just pull it out the way it is?
Just pull it out.
Just pull it out, okay. So it's just to remove the $50,000 for carpeting. Okay, any discussion on that?
Is there any other work that needs to go on on the inside? Is there any other repairs or anything?
The carpet was what was requested. That and the, and the air conditioning and electrical, which we're currently working on.
Is any of that gonna be inside, because it, kind of, to Mr. Overby's point, if there's gonna be any kind of work going on inside, well, it doesn't make sense to put new carpet down now.
Well, I mean, and this is, the budget goes through June 30th of '26, so we would, of course, do whichever project is, you know, needs to be done first, if they're both approved.
I think, kinda like what he's saying, like, just like with the air handlers and stuff like that, are they gonna have to come through the courtroom to install that stuff? If it does, it could damage the carpet.
Yeah, well, we'll ensure that, you know, new carpet is installed and then we tear it up. We'll, we'll be, we'll ensure nothing like that happens.
Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Uh, we were in discussion on removing the 50,000 for courthouse carpeting. Any other discussion? If not, Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Kendrick?
Uh.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Overby?
Uh.
And I vote aye, so let's take that out for this year. Any more discussion on the budget for this year?
I'll make a motion to remove the 400,000 dollars for the new ambulance.
Okay. We have a motion to remove the 400,000 dollars for the new ambulance for this year. Uh, is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Um, discussion?
My main reason for removing that is, it's gonna take over a year if we were to want to actually purchase another ambulance. Um, so for all practical purposes, the funds probably would not be spent until the next fiscal year, so I think it's fine to remove it.
Any more discussion on that?
We would need those funds, because that's kind of what happened, like, if, if we had moved on it last year, we would have saved as the, the cost of the ambulances have gone up.
But we're not gonna pay until delivery, so delivery is gonna be over 12 months. Scotty, unless you, unless you've got something in the works?
I've been looking around and I found another option of a remapping unit, which is a brand-new chassis with a reconditioned box on it. And they're running around $30,000, and they are ready to paint. We could have one next year.
And that'd be a savings of 100,000?
How about your grant for that? You did apply for a grant, didn't you?
RSS grants were canceled earlier, and just like anything that takes government money, we, that's when the next cycle comes around, which will be, uh, what's that cycle?
September 15th?
September. General grant, if anything takes government money for a program. Hey, Scotty, you checking those whole questions, about having your old ambulance remounted? I've called them, they have. And we've got a new representative gentleman that you spoke with, he's not over there. I did get that out of us all, guys.
You should get around 180 remounted, if you've got the truck already. If you've got the old box, you should be able to get it for about 180.
Yeah, but we've probably had to put the third one back, replacing eight twenty. All of our trucks are getting aged, so 100, 112, 130,000 on the outlets, we might start calling them back in minutes or something, the boxes.
You're talking about taking the, the orange truck?
The orange truck is out of service, yes.
I think it's taking that one, just having it remounted up.
Eight twelve cannot be remounted. Eight twelve, 99 Horton, and it's out of date, Dave, nobody will remount it. It has to be completely destroyed and rebuilt, so it costs more to remount that one than it would to have a, um. That was one of them, we looked at, it was just.
It sounds like you're talking about a situation added in.
Okay, uh, any more discussion on removing the 400,000 dollars for the new ambulance?
Is there 400, 400?
Okay. If not, we'll go ahead and vote on that. Mr. Marshall?
No.
Mr. Kendrick?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Overby?
Yes.
Um, I'm going to vote no at this point. I think we still need to leave ourselves open for options right now. More discussion? Any more discussion on the budget for this year?
So with those, um, removing that 190, 204,500, did I calculate that right?
It doesn't change the bottom line of the deficit of the general fund. That's.
Right.
The total that was removed was, uh, 204,500.
Yes.
But at that point, we, if we did go back to what Mr. Perry suggested earlier, or, I don't, I don't think he made his motion, I can't remember, the 197, 337 out of the contingency fund, um.
It would change the total number, right, Lori?
Correct.
Yep. So that's 76.
That would still have put us using about 1.3 million out of the, uh, 1.3 million in capital improvements of it.
So it would change your total budget amount to 75,998,841. Is that correct, Lori?
So you're doing that, sorry. That's right. 75, 995, 841? Hang on, I did it wrong.
I think I had 75, 998.
Yep, 75, 998, 841.
Going back to salaries, did you get an answer on the DSS that we discussed about merit increases and cost of living increases?
Yes. Oh, this is directly from the director herself. Merit raises are included in our comp plan that is submitted to the state. This is a way to retain employees since we cannot pay employees with a salary worksheet shows they should be paid. Merit raises are based on the local Department of Social Service Employee Performance and Evaluation Plan. The EPPE is completed every year on the anniversary of the start date of the employee. It is scored based on the job description and the percentage of time the employee does that part of the job. The scores are then totaled and a final score is given to the employee. Performance rating earned is one of the following: outstanding, exceeds expectations, meets expectations, needs improvement. Currently, the merit increases are outstanding, earns the employee a 3% pay increase, exceeds expectations, earns the employee a 2% pay increase, meets expectations, earns the employee a 1% pay increase, and needs improvement, no pay increase in resultant in performance improvement plan. An example of a merit increase is as follows: FFS1 salary of $36,993, earns a 2% merit increase for exceeds expectation, and that increases the salary to $37,732. The total increase is $740, and the county's portion of that is $115. The county is only responsible for a small portion of the DSS salary budget. The salaries are paid 84.5% by federal state and 15.5% by the county.
I think, I think what I asked last time about that was, was it a required thing that they use that merit pay since we had stopped it from the county as a whole? And you said it was state required?
Yes, they have to have a state-approved pay plan. Their DSS is really different than any other department.
But does that mean it is state-required, that they give the merit raise?
If they don't give merit, they would have to exchange it for like something else. So what I'm trying to say is it doesn't necessarily matter how it's listed on the pay plan, but they have to have scheduled pay increases.
But they don't necessarily have to use the merit pay.
I can ask her if there's an alternative pay plan. I'm not sure what the fiscal impact would, that would be, if any.
Just look into it a little bit more.
Any more discussion on the fiscal year 25, 26 budget? Any motions related to that now? Okay, my comment to everybody on the board is nail down what you want to look at, I'm sorry, what you want to do to it, try to have it looked at before our next meeting. I would like to get this hammered out, you know, in the next two weeks, so if we can all be diligent in trying to get that done, I would greatly appreciate it, and I'm sure the people out there would as well. With that being said, we're ready to move on to our reports. The administrator's report.
I do have an update in regards to break speed. So as you all know, we had quite a few, our citizens experience extended service disruptions with break speed. Mr. Kendrick asked about how, what the county can kind of do to address that. I reached out to the SEC and their director said that the best thing to do is kind of, they're strengthening numbers, so the more people that report these extended outages to the SEC, the better, because they keep track of them and they're monitoring them per locality. So his response was, citizens who are experiencing extended break speed service disruptions can contact the SEC's Division of Public Utility Regulation. Consumers are encouraged to call the company first to resolve issues, but if they have no success with break speed, they may contact the SEC. There is an online SEC communications complaint form, which we're going to post on our website and then share on Facebook tomorrow, so please look for that. Consumers may also call the Division of Public Utility Regulation toll-free at 1-800-552-7945 or directly at 804-371-9611. And he assured me that the SEC is following up on all complaints from multiple localities served by the company. I've also sent this exact statement to the enterprise and our local radio station, and I've asked them to get this information out as well. Once again, kind of that strengthened numbers, so the more, I guess, complaint forms that are filled out, the more seriously the SEC will take us. And that's all my.
Thank you. We're going to move on to the supervisor's report. I'm actually going to go first tonight. First thing is with parks and rec, the softball is geared up. If you've not gone into the softball, the tee ball, the coaches pitch, any of those sporting events, they're well worth it. I was at a coaches pitch game the other night, and those kids were having a blast, and I think I was having just as much fun watching them. Movies in the Park, that was a big hit last year, it'll be again this year. It's posted on the Facebook page, everything, which parks are hosting which movies, so be sure to get out there and attend those. I also have a statement I would like to read from myself. It says, "Our board believes strongly in the concept of transparency. At our last meeting, the work session on April 28th, 2025, we went into a closed meeting under personnel exemption and the Freedom of Information Act. At that time, we honestly believe that our discussion of various salaries of county employees was subject to the exemption. As it turns out, there are a couple of opinions that the Virginia Attorney General that suggest that the personnel exemption would not cover our closed meeting. We made an honest mistake, and I want to go ahead and correct that. I'm asking that the clerk to include in the minutes of this meeting the documents that were discussed in that closed meeting. We consider those documents as, we consider those documents as we discuss some budget items. We did not take any action in the closed meeting or afterwards based on the closed meeting. I apologize on behalf of the board, and I myself will strive to do better in the future." That concludes what I have. Mr. Marshall?
Yeah, April 15th, I attended planning commission meeting. April 16th, I attended the CNPT in town of Stewart meetings. April 17th, I attended the tourism advisory committee meeting. April 23rd, I attended the Economic Development Authority, or EDA, meeting. On April 26th, my wife and I attended the fire and rescue banquet. This was a very nice event honoring our fire and rescue volunteers who contribute so much to the betterment of the community and the safety and welfare of our residents. On May 5th, I attended the recreation committee meeting, and May 8th, I attended the school board meeting. On May 10th, my wife and I attended the Dead Reckoning Concert, a Grateful Dead tribute at the historic Star Theater. This event was presented by One Family Productions and made possible by the town of Stewart. Events like these are significant tourism drivers for our community and provide a valuable benefit to the community as a whole. I encourage fellow board members to participate in these local events one able, as our presence serves to highlight and endorse the importance of tourism as a key industry in Patrick Hanning. I've received two pieces of correspondence from residents. One, a resident on Belcher Mountain Road in Meadows at Dan expressed concern regarding the unpaved section near Willis Road. The resident highlighted issues related to dust generation significantly impacted their property. This matter has been discussed with VDOT, and they are aware of the situation. While I do not have a definitive timeline for resolution, I will continue to monitor this issue and maintain periodic contact with both VDOT and the affected residents. And another one, a senior citizen from the Blue Ridge District Road concerning recent increases in county taxes. The resident, who is retired and on fixed income, mentioned recent major health issues and ongoing medical expenses. They strongly urged the board to avoid further tax increases, noting the potential negative impact even on properties related to vacationers within our picturesque county. Also, I would ask that the complaint that I filed with the board in light of your statements also be allowed into the minutes, and I have a copy of it here for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kendrick?
I had three meetings recently, and I missed all three of them. We attend a concert, a gospel concert in Myrtle Beach every year, same week, and it happened to be that all three of those meetings was on the same week. But before I left, I notified all three boards that I wouldn't be able to be present, and even offered with West Piedmont to Zoom if I needed to, you know, if they needed me or needed me for the vote, and they said that would be fine. So I hate missing them because I very rarely miss one, but I did miss those three. And another thing, I had a complaint, I'll send that to you when I get a chance, but there's a complaint about AEP and some of the broadband stuff that's going on with spreading chemicals around people's gardens, too close to the houses and stuff, but I'll send that on to you, should I get the record of it, and then you can go there, whatever you think we need to do on it. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perry?
I don't have anything to do with this time. I've got a very busy week coming up, though, so.
Okay. Mr. Overby?
I don't have anything to do with that.
Okay, thank you. With that, we are ready to move into closed meeting. Do we have a motion for that?
I move that the board convene in closed meeting pursuant to the Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider the following personnel matters: public service authority for the Blue Ridge District, Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program ASAP at large.
Okay, I have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Mr. Marshall?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Ah.
Mr. Perry?
Ah.